All right, let's call the meeting to order. It's I guess 10:01 properly, 10:02. What's immediately going to, just before we start the meeting, I just want to remind everybody that has not sent in a support letter for the EDA change to the Cog. Please email those today to Emily. We have five or six that we need to get in to make sure that we have a majority of the Cog members that have responded. Make a short sweep, however you want to do it, just make it turn that it gets done today and email it to Emily. All right. Okay. Let's go into the report of the executive director.
All right, well, welcome to our new location here at Advance. As you saw, some activity going on here this morning, we're still trying to figure, work out the kinks and figure out the best layout of how we have this a little big right now. Exactly. So it's funny because this day and age, I'm still tethered to cords. So unfortunately, the owl can only go a certain distance from me and then I have to have access to HDMI cable. So we're going to figure something out where it's a little bit more maybe this way and a little bit more closer together. So I know we have a busy agenda here today and there's been a lot going on here with our office move and settling in. You know, I welcome anybody after the meeting to come on down and take a look at what we have. It's still, you know, a construction site, so to speak, but for the most part, you'll see the layout and everything if you're interested in taking a look after. So if you have a few minutes after lunch during lunch, feel free to do so. And again, I just wanted to just make a couple of quick points on the agenda. You'll see Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day. It's a little later this year with our contract with Clean Harbors. We have to obviously navigate the, they, they're the vendor for quite a few of these in the States. We have to navigate their schedule as well as ours. So we're moved, we just moved it a little bit later in October. We will have information out to the towns in the next week to 10 days. So I'm assuming that some of your towns put these information in their newsletters or whatever they may send out from social media standpoint. So we want to make sure we get ahead of that. We had a really good turnout in the spring event as well, too. So this one will be at Bog Road again at the Torrington Water Pollution Control Facility, that same place it was last fall. I know that some people when they were, you know, Mike, actually, Mike Chris happened to be there as well. It's wrong time. We had a, we had a couple of moments where we, we had too many cars that were out onto the road and we want to make sure that they have two lanes that they're, they're using for circulation in that event as well. So we were hoping for some improvements there being that that's the new facility that we're at as far as, as far as our experience. So any, any questions or concerns or comments on that, please feel free to give me, you know, contact me on that the next week or so. Other than that, we discussed the bylaws and personnel policies and procedures about going through a review process and, and, and potential updates in areas where it's really, you know, either kind of required or maybe prudent. When we had the last special meeting, we talked about the bylaws. We didn't have anything from personnel policies to review and there was comments made that we should just, you know, have the executive committee work with this and basically in committee. And, and that's what I'm planning on doing. So I just wanted to let everybody know to follow up on that, that we'll, we'll send both of these at some point soon to the executive committee for, for review and discussion. So, you know, with that said, I know we, again, we have a pretty busy agenda and I want to definitely leave time for the roundtable because we haven't been together for a couple of months for the most part. So with that, I'll take any questions or anything that may come up. Otherwise I would turn it over to our speakers for the update on the ARPA capital projects. I know they're going to be remote, they're being here in person, I think, but they're going to be remote for the last minute. So any questions? Just let me know.
Good, can we, are there any questions? Can we get in touch now with Kevin?
Yeah, he's just logging in right now. I'm just letting him in. The problem is when I'm talking, I can't do the controls. So we'll have to find a solution on that.
There he is.
Here he comes. Can you hear us, Kevin? Morning. Are you, we're just getting into your agenda item. Do you have, I will be sharing the screen or anybody else or should have no problem sharing on your end.
Yeah, actually, Jillian, would you mind sharing and presenting while I talk through if you're prepared to do that?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Let me share my screen now.
Great, thank you. Well, first of all, good morning to you all. It's great to be able to talk to you and how much time do we have for this conversation? Just want to make sure we respect the, your agenda.
I think we have it for 15 or 20 minutes.
Okay. Okay. Great, if you're all set, we can, we'll just kick right off.
We are ready.
Okay, well, thanks for the opportunity to talk to you today. I'm Kevin Passas, the Director of the Office of Telecommunications and Broadband at the Department of Energy Environmental Protection. We're administering a couple of federal broadband programs and this is part of outreach that we want to make. We're making to communities in the state regarding these programs and the opportunities for constituents within COG boundaries. So thanks for the chance to talk to you. Let's go to the next slide if we can. So we'll talk a little bit about internet in Connecticut. I just hit some high level points for you, who's doing what and some resources that are available. We'll talk about the infrastructure grant programs. We'll talk about mapping efforts and why that's so important in terms of broadband availability in the state and then ways that you can continue to be connected with us and we'll be reaching out to you as we go forward. So I'll leave time at the end for any questions and issues that you might have. You know, reach in or just jump in, interrupt me if you need to during the deck here. Otherwise we'll be happy to address further questions you have at the end. Next slide. Okay, so we thought it'd be helpful, first of all, just to let you know kind of who's who in terms of state agencies working on broadband. We have a lot of really a full fledged approach here at the state. So starting with the top of the slide, the Office of Policy and Management or OPM is working on broadband mapping for the state and with the federal government. So as I'll talk a little bit about later, the FCC, Federal Communications Commission, has been tasked with mapping, developing updated statewide or nationwide broadband maps that are have particular relevance for the broadband programs and particularly one that we'll be talking about. So it's good that OPM has got a group now that's focusing entirely on this. And we've got state level maps we'll talk about as well as the federal maps that are being developed by the FCC that we're working on and, and we're working with OPM in that endeavor. So you have DEEP, Department of Energy Environmental Protection. We are administering a American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA Capital Projects Fund or CPF grant program that we're getting ready to launch. And we'll talk about that in a minute. We're also administering the Infrastructure Investment Jobs Act, Broadband Equity Access and Deployment or BEED program. That's the big one you might have heard where we were just awarded $144 million for broadband grants within the state. So we're administering those two programs. Then you have the Department of Administrative Services, which is administering the sister program to the BEED program, which is the Digital Equity Act. That is a program that looks to focus on digital equity across the country and in our state and will fund efforts towards that end. Then you have the Connecticut Education Network, which my guess is you may be familiar with. That's really an anchor institution network serving all cities and towns in Connecticut with internet access for government schools, education facilities and other anchor institutions. And then finally, the Office of Consumer Counsel or OCC works on the legislative front, regulatory front for rate payers of all types of services, not just broadband, but they've been very active in the broadband realm as well with consumer issues. Next slide. Okay, so just talking a little bit about internet within the state and let's go forward. So what I want to touch about here briefly is a big focus of broadband efforts are what's called last mile connectivity or service to end users. So if you look at this diagram, the cloud thingy there on the left side of the picture is what can be called the backbone or the core of the internet. So that's where carriers pass information to one another, where resources are stored on the internet. As you move towards the right, you get to what's called middle mile infrastructure, local cloud infrastructure. So if you use, you know, you're a Microsoft user in your, in your town with Office 365 or Tyler applications or permitting software, all these type of things generally reside somewhere on the backbone of the internet, either in a hosted service or, and, and you're generally connecting between networks to get to those resources. But then moving further to the right, you've got the picture of the house, the buildings here. That's what's called the last mile and that's the connection from your premise to your local service provider who then ships you upstream to whatever resource you're looking for. And that connection, the last mile piece is what's really been the focus of availability and speed and reliability and so on from the carrier standpoint and from the government standpoint. So making sure that that connection from you to your ISP is fast enough and adequate enough, reliable enough to support the work that we need to do today and into the future. So what the federal programs are really looking for, especially the BEED program I mentioned, is sustainable last mile technology, preferably a wired connection, preferably with fiber, fiber optics. That's the fastest technology that is available, the most future proof, if you will, because it has virtually unlimited bandwidth. Carriers all pass information back and forth to each other over fiber lengths. Fiber has been making its way closer and closer to last mile connectivity into end user customers so that everyone can leverage that same speed. So that is going to be a focus of the programs that we are looking to support is delivering fiber to end customers and that's right in line with the federal guidance. How fast is fast enough? So there are a couple of definitions that have relevance, especially for the BEED program. The FCC and the National Telecommunications and Information Association or NTIA considers a speed of less than 25 megabits download and three megabits per second upload. If you don't have access to that speed, you're what's called unserved. If you have less than 100 megabits down, 20 up, you're what's called underserved. So all these federal programs are going to look to make sure everyone gets access to at least, at least that 100 by 20. That said, moving down to the right under the diagram here, thankfully, the governor, the bill that was passed, Public Act 21159, that also charged us with administering these programs and the OPM with mapping also articulated a statewide goal of one gig down, one gigavits per second. That's 10 times 100 meg and 100 megavits per second upload. So that is a much more realistic goal for where we need to be as a state. So that's also what we'll be trying to reach through our programs as we go. So why does speed matter? Why do these last mile connections matter? This is really going to be, I think you may see it in your communities as, as municipal services move online, education, health and so on move online. As we saw through the pandemic, that online connectivity is critical towards citizens engaging with society and government as we go forward. Next slide. So we, another outcome of the Public Act 21159 required DEEP to develop a report every two years to the governor on the state of broadband in Connecticut. So this report here, we need to do a few things. We need to articulate our progress on the broadband programs, our goal towards reaching that universal access to one gig by 100. Progress towards closing the digital equity and digital equities and condition where everyone has the same access to broadband connections, skills, technology, devices, et cetera, to, to function and closing the adoption gap. Adoption is where a connection is available, how many people are actually taking to, taking that connection and subscribing to it. So amongst other things, that's what we're charged to do. This report is available on DEEP's website in your spare time. I'm sure you made it out of a lot of that, but we encourage you to read it because this, the report that we submitted in December of last year establishes baselines for all of the issues I just talked about and will serve as markers going forward for us as we go through the federal programs that we're administering. So part of the outcomes here to develop a comprehensive outreach and engagement plan, that's part of the efforts that we're doing here with engaging with COGS, regional states and towns, cities and towns, as well as our state peers and efforts here and some other efforts that we have going on that we'll share with you. And also we certainly want to drive awareness for the broadband programs as we go forward. Next slide. And one more. So talking about the grant programs, there are many different programs on the federal level that are, are active and have relevance. There are four particular ones that we'll highlight here and you can go for, to internetforall.gov. That's internetforall.gov. That is a new federal website where they've done a good job of putting information about all federal broadband programs in one spot. The four that are here on the right have relevance for us in Connecticut, especially because these are ones that the state and/or, or the federal government is administering to our benefit. So the first, the broadband equity access deployment or BEED program, DEEP is administering that. The Digital Equity Act programs, that's being administered by DAS, as I mentioned, particularly the Commission for Educational Technology. The Affordable Connectivity Program, that is a direct subsidy to consumer program for those that need help affording internet connections. The state does not administer that. Providers work directly with consumers and with the federal government on that program to ensure those that are eligible can get that subsidy. And then the Capital Projects Fund, as I mentioned, that's DEEP is administering a Capital Projects Fund, as is DAS, towards broadband infrastructure deployment. Next slide. So let's look at the ones that DEEP is administering in particular. Here on the left hand side is the American Rescue Plan Capital Projects Fund program. This, the, the blurb there in the gray box for low income, multifamily curd to home and business infrastructure build out and underserved area infrastructure grants. That is the direction from the General Assembly in the Budget Implementer Bill for the, for these monies. We have just about $41 million to grant out. We have a request for application that is drafted, ready to go or waiting for final clearance to launch this program. So expect this to launch very soon, should be this fall. And this program has a timeline of all projects needing to, needing to be complete by the end of 2026. So this will be a infrastructure grant program to likely to applicants who would build out broadband to underserved areas. Those are those areas lacking that access to 100 down by 20 up that we mentioned earlier. On the right is the BEED program. That's the broadband equity access deployment and you can see this one here. This has got an order of events to it and this ties directly to the FCC map I mentioned. So the FCC is developing this map and particularly noting all locations in the state that are underserved, that don't have access to that 25 down, three up, and then noting all locations that don't have access to that 100 by 20. So that's being mapped by the FCC across the state. And the way this program is going to work is that locations that do not have access, the unserved first, will get initial funding so that they can get served by a provider. What we will do is create project areas that encompass these unserved and then underserved locations and then grant monies to serve them with broadband at speeds of at least 100 by 20, ideally up to that one, one gig down by 100 up. Once we fixed all the unserved, we move to the underserved. And then the next bucket of money here is for community anchor institutions. We'll talk about those in a second and the unique opportunity for anchor institutions with this program. So $144 million here is available and we are readying an initial proposal for this program, which we will, we will be releasing likely in November, by November of this, of this year. And then once that's approved, we'll get access to initial monies and then we'll have a final proposal due coming up at the end of December. Next slide. So I want to talk about community anchor institutions just a bit here. So looking on the upper left, the verbiage from the Notice of Funding Opportunity says that generally CAIs or community anchor institutions are the organizations, you hear that facilitate greater use of broadband serviced by vulnerable populations, including. So you may think this is really vague and it is, and they intentionally left it this way so that they're, they realize, the federal government realizes there may be a wide swath of organizations that are working to help people adopt broadband and they want to make sure that those organizations get funding for broadband connections and the work that they're doing. So the opportunities for, in the BEED program for these anchor institutions are going to the blue box on the right, upper right. They would be potentially eligible for a one gigabit symmetric connection, the capital cost to be funded by the program and then also other work, financial support for the work that they're doing. So all that to say, you know, you can see a pretty wide list of eligible institutions, suggested eligible institutions. We'll be defining the, the breadth of potential organizations with our initial proposal that we release soon for public comment. But the, the population that this could apply to is very large. If you look at this on a statewide basis, according to Department of Social Services, we're talking potentially two thirds of the state could be eligible as far as the population groups that are targeted here by the work that these organizations are doing. So real good opportunity here. One of the things that we're doing now is making sure that we're aware of community anchor institutions that are doing this work as part of the initial proposal for BEED. We have to identify them, we have to put them on a map and submit that to the NTIA as the first eligibility, baseline eligibility for potential funding. If we don't identify them on our map, then they are not eligible for funding. So that's kind of a big call to action here is to help us identify these organizations in your communities. Next slide. Okay, so mentioned that we are mapping broadband on the state level along with the FCC. There are two major areas that we're focusing on, on the state and this ties to our mandates in terms of what we need to report. The first is access to broadband. That's the map here on the blue, on, on the left in blue. So this is where is broadband available in the state at those levels of at least 100 down by 20 up. So looking at some high level and you can go to broadbandmaps.c t.gov and directly access these maps. But the access map, that's where broadband is available, the state is largely well-served. Overall, if you look at locations, we have, right now, we think there are roughly in the area of 10,000 locations that do not have access to at least that 25 three. But if you look at the total available, total locations in this state, that's, we're well over 99% served. So not to say there are not issues and locations and areas that we need to address from an access standpoint. Adoption though is another story. Where broadband connections are available, generally statewide, 78% of people have adopted those connections. So we have a much bigger broadband adoption gap. People subscribe into available connections than we have an access gap. So we'll be tracking this again on broadbandmaps.c t.gov. Next slide. And what you'll see here, as you look at these maps on the availability side, you can click into first a specific town like we did here with New Britain and then you can zoom in further to census blocks and see broadband availability on the census block level, on the state maps. On the FCC maps, just to, to let you know, the FCC has created location IDs. They're not putting out addresses, but they've created location IDs that preserve privacy and they were tracking on a FCC location ID basis and the state is also working with that data set. But again, we're not disclosing that as it is a private information. Next slide. So the same thing on the adoption maps, you'll see the same scenario here where you can zoom in towards a particular town in, in your cog and then zoom in further again on the census tract level here with adoption maps. And you'll see the same type of figures and breakdowns in terms of adoption metrics as you see on the access map as well. Next slide. Okay, so things that we have going on. First of all, we are now holding quarterly roundtables. We have three different sets of roundtables. One is for service providers or likely program subguarantees. So that would be, again, likely public, private companies could be municipalities, et cetera, that would deploy broadband and apply for funds to deploy broadband to either of our programs. So that's one roundtable we, we hold. And the intent of these three different ones is to make sure that we are giving pertinent information to each of these groups and also getting questions that are relevant to the different groups. So the first is for, for service providers. The second is for state and local government leaders and organizations. So that's the likes of you, where we want to again, make sure that we are addressing concerns for state and local governments and questions you have for us, information that's relevant to you, being the leaders of where the, the monies will be deployed. The third roundtable we have is for community organizations, those community anchor institutions. Those are the agencies that are touching, directly interacting with constituents that we're trying to serve and especially are targeted by the programs. So that's a, are one of the main reasons we have or a main methods we have of, of engaging on a regular basis. We held the last ones last month in August. We'll be holding another roundtable series in November. There we'll be covering our initial proposal and likely the launch of our Capital Products Fund program. So keep, we, we, we've got contact information for the cog here. We'll be noticing you that when these roundtables are available, we'd love to have you participate in any or all that you see fit. Secondly, the community organization survey I mentioned, this is our effort to map those community anchor institutions that are facilitating greater use of broadband. If you can think of locations in your communities or organizations or, or, or companies, any, any type of group that may be working to facilitate adoption of broadband, please pass them this QR code. Again, that survey is baseline eligibility. What it does, it captures a name and an address and asks basic questions about what's being done to adopt broadband or facilitate the adoption of broadband. And that's the start for eligibility for funding under the BEED program for community anchor institutions. And then lastly, moving to the right here, we will have a, our initial proposal comment, public comment period in November of this year. And then following up on that early next, we'll have a challenge process to those FCC maps. And again, I guess I, I want to make sure we're being very clear, these maps drive funding on the, for the BEED program. So if locations are, are un- and underserved and we don't know about them, the FCC doesn't know about them or if there's anchor institutions that are working to facilitate adoption of broadband and we don't know about them, they're not mapped, they will not be eligible for funding. So this can be a very, very important process. And then lastly, we'll keep you abreast as we release requests for applications or request proposals on either program so that if municipalities are, are interested in applying, that's certainly a, a venue to pursue and we'll make you aware of that as we go forward. And I think that's all we have. One more slide, I think maybe it's just here is a, you can contact us at this address. Our team will get back to you. We're happy to share our content from, contact information individually as well. But with that, I'll open it up to questions.
Any questions from group? I, I have one, just, we've noticed that when Frontier, I'm Henry Todd, I'm the first electman of the town of Canton, I'm also the chairman of the cog. You notice that in a lot of our towns, when Frontier comes in, they, they handle a majority of the town, but they leave areas out. And I would like to see us take a regional approach to trying to figure out through the cog how we can approach you for getting coverage in those areas that are skipped. And that is with fiber because I think fiber is really the answer for everybody and everybody should have it. Is that something that you would look at?
Absolutely. So that is explicitly the intent of the BEED program, those locations that are being left behind. You know, we want to make sure we know about them, they're on our map and on the FCC's map. And if they are left out, then they, again, I can't say, you know, if they are showing as un- or underserved on those maps, then they would be eligible for funding under the, under the BEED program expressly, expressly and explicitly. The ARPA program that we're getting ready to launch has more of a underserved focus. So either program would be a fit and especially the BEED program would be a fit for those locations. So absolutely. You know, you can reach out through us. We can also have conversations, facilitate, facilitate conversations with OPM to make sure that as we get closer, that we know of these locations and we can get them on the map. So that will be the baseline for eligibility, but that is exactly what the program's intended to fix. Those locations are being left behind.
This is Don, Don, I'm first electman of our camp. So if I can expand on that, I'll give you an example. We have 1,700 home. We have seventeen hundred homes. Frontier came in and said they were going to do a hundred percent of them. And they stopped short of doing any neighborhoods with underground utilities. But pretty much all of those homes have charter spectrum internet of some lower speed. And Frontier is saying they don't know when they're going to come in and do the rest of them. So these are not understood. The patients, because people do have started getting one hundred, two hundred, three hundred megabit. We would like to see if we can. Find out how to get frontier to serve those areas with fiber optics. But I think the cable company like Charter are not going to be fiber ever, or at least not in the near future. So it's not so much they're underserved. It's that Frontier is saying we can't afford to cover those neighborhoods right now. How does that fit into, you know, your, your process?
Yeah, that's a, that is a tougher situation. If the cable companies are showing, let's say, uh, 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 a subset of homes as served, they're getting at least. Uh, or they're stating they're getting one hundred by twenty. One of the things that we can do. Is potentially pursue challenges to that. To their assessment of those locations by showing through either speed tests. Or latency tests, that's delays in, in packets getting from one point to another. Um, that this, the speeds are not as they're, they're supposed to be or not as being advertised. So there are some vehicles that we pursue within the B program. To, uh, to, to cha- challenge the status of those locations. So we are looking at reliability. Um, if there are issues with connections being up, you know, w- w- if there's. Periods of outages and so on, we're looking at how to pursue that with the NTIA. In terms of, uh, getting what's called an area challenge where if there are a certain number of locations within a census tract. Or census block rather, that do not have adequate speed, or we can prove don't have adequate speed or latency. We're also pursuing a reliability and availability, um. Uh, option as well, that we can, we can contest. The status that the, the carriers indicated for those locations. If that's successful. Then we can identify that then what, what happens with that area challenge is. It then becomes on a burden on the provider to prove. That they do adequately serve per program definition. So that's potentially, oh, an avenue we can pursue. For some of the locations that you're talking about. Um, otherwise, if, if they are showing and speed tests show and other, other areas show that there's adequate service there. I'll admit that's a shortfall. It, the, the, the program does not allow for us to build in areas where there is. Uh, adequate levels of broadband. So we've got to pursue other, other avenues to, to contest that assessment. But we, we, we wish we could. We can't just bring in multiple providers where adequate broadband exists through this program.
Any other questions?
Um, just, just a comment from Jean from Kent. Hi Kevin, thanks for. For this presentation. It's very helpful to have all of the programs sort of in one place to, to try to untangle. Kent had the same issue with Frontier coming through. They were very enthusiastic. We're gonna, you know, all the. Promises in the whole wide world and we're left with the same gaps. So my question is, and, and our cog has been. Interested and wanting to move forward in some sort of regional way to fill these gaps and to. You know, ensure better broadband across and the map, as you showed it was very, um, obvious. The entire northwest corner is sort of, you know, the, um, big elephant in the corner there. But how do we, as a. As a cog or as, you know, the towns that want to move forward with this sort of unique help from you, how do we do that?
Probably I think the best bet would be is we'll be releasing the, the American Rescue Plan Capital Project Fund Program. That's going to be very soon. Uh, as I said, you know, should be, should be this fall, uh, barring everything goes as, as we plan. Um, that again, now we've got direction from the General Assembly for low income, multifamily, curb to home components, but. That is one thing that, or one program first that would be worth looking at. So that has. Uh, less specificity. The way that program is defined, we can build in generally underserved areas. So we don't have to build in unserved first, like we do with the B program. With the ARPA, we can start with generally underserved. So. A, a, a possible or one vehicle I'm thinking is or one possibility is to make a case for. Systemic underserved status, you know, in your area, which certainly seems to be, you know, uh, 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 pretty obvious from, from what's available. Now, there's going to be a lot of scoring criteria in terms of how, where that money will go. We've only got, you know, forty-one million dollars out of, of, uh, to work with there, but. That's, I would, I would look at that and let me say this too, that both of the programs, especially the B program. Encourage municipality. Uh, other, what they call alternate service provider participation. So I think the government realizes that. The scenario you've mentioned with the incumbents leaving areas behind, they realize that this has been a problem and it's going to take. Uh, other entities and specifically municipalities, cooperatives, et cetera, are called out to and encouraged to participate in these programs. So. I would say when we, when we release the request for applications for the, the ARPA program. Look at that and see if that, how that will, will, will potentially fit. That is a, a potential vehicle to be used. And then secondarily, the B program, when that hits, that is going to be really explicitly driven around. From the theories that will encompass those on and underserved locations. So unfortunately. That's what we'll all have to work with. Uh, in terms of where money can go with that program. So at that point. It would be good to just engage with us and with OPM to really look at. Uh, you know, it, let's really look at areas, the lo- those locations that are left behind, what's available for service. What does the FCC map say about those locations specifically? And, uh, and OPM will be happy to engage on this. And how do we potentially look at an area challenge to contest? How those locations are being identified on the FCC map? So this will all become available to you. Uh, again, in November will be the public comment period. And probably sometime early in the first year, we will start that challenge process. That would be the, the, the chance then during that challenge process. That's all about challenging the FCC maps. So I think that would be the best vehicle to pursue. And certainly whether, you know, if you're looking at this on a regional level, as long as locations are being addressed that are identified on the map. Or that are on and underserved, that's, that's fair game. So the more. Uh, however it gets, it's, it, it gets done. And let me say this too. This program, the B program goes as far as to say that if there is. An incumbent provider that proposes a solution to a project area. And an alternative provider that proposes a solution for the same area. We have to pick the alternate provider solution or tell the NTA why we did not. So that should give you, you know, some indication as far as the NTIA's preference for who bids in on, on this program.
Thank you. It's helpful.
Anything else? Kevin, thank you very much for, uh, participating and, and giving us this information. We appreciate it.
Quite well. We, uh, I hope to be there in person today, but we had an illness on the team. So thanks for, uh, commenting us remotely. Reach out at any time and, uh, we're, we're thank you for the, thank you for the time as well this morning.
Thank you.
Take care.
You too. Uh. Jocelyn. You're up.
Oh, hi everybody. I'm good to see you. The only thing we've been talking about longer than broadband is housing affordability. Um, but I am going to give you some updates, quick updates on what the Center for Housing Opportunity is doing specifically that might be of interest to you as chief elected officials. Um, so if you can go to the next slide, I'm going to go through some slides very quickly. Um. Uh, again, just kind of give you a quick overview of what we're working on in your communities. Um, and some new things that might, uh, be of interest to you. Um, what we set out to do, um, if you're wondering what we do day to day. We set out to really provide direct, um, staff support to local housing nonprofits. We were trying to just serve ten. Um, we are now serving fifteen local housing nonprofits. Um, in Winstead and Barkhamsted and Litchfield and Morris. And Norfolk and Salisbury and North Canaan, not so much Burlington, Falls Village. Um, so we're working with a lot of your towns. Um, again. Most of that local housing organizations in our region are all volunteer driven, which is amazing and terrific. Um, but you can only ask so much of volunteers. Um, and so. We kind of step in there and help the day, do the day-to-day, um, work that needs to get done to get developments to move forward in your town. Um, we have also been lucky to get funding from the Department of Housing. So we can provide some seed funding for projects if your local housing organization. Finds a site, um, that it wants to, um, look into to see if it's developable. We can give them some money. As we've done in Winchester with an exciting project, um. To redevelop a, a former elementary school. Um, give them the resources that they need, both the staff resources and the funds, um, to really look into. Um, whether that can happen and, and kind of make it happen. So. Um, and we have been able to, I think with those tools. Work with your local housing nonprofits to spur them to look into more opportunities. So we do have over the last year fifty-eight. Additional units in the pipeline than were in the pipeline prior to our involvement. Um, and as you guys know, we need as many as we can get within the region. So. We're excited about that. Um. A forum coming up. Um, I'm actually on a panel with Gordon, who is maybe. Joining us virtually but isn't here today, um, about. Uh, housing and conservation and how we can work together. As you all know, we need both housing. Opportunities and conservation, um, in our towns, and we have very strong housing organizations and conservation organizations. In some of our towns, they are already working together and collaborating. Um, we're just going to talk some more at this forum about how to facilitate that collaboration and keep it going. Um. And we have also been able to launch a new grant program with Berkshire Taconic Community Foundation. And Foundation for Community Health, Health. To help continue to facilitate those collaborations between. Conservation organizations, major employers and housing organizations in the region. Again, about how we can meet our town's priority goals for both housing and conservation. Um, so that's going to be September twenty-second in Salisbury. Um, and all of you are obviously welcome to attend. Um, and if you guys have ideas about how to bring together your. Um, housing and conservation organizations more, um, or a pilot project. Um, let me know. I can send you the information about the grant program. Unfortunately, it's only eligible to Region One towns plus Norfolk and Goshen. Um, because those, that's Berkshire Taconic Service Area. Um, but if you have ideas in other towns, we might be able to find some funds to help. Facilitate that in towns outside of Berkshire Taconic Service Area. So I just wanted to mention that. Next slide. Um, also, as you might recall, uh, last year we had our annual housing summit in Goshen, um, at the old cog office. Um, and the Goshen Housing Trust property. This year we're having it in Warren. I know Greg's online. Um, he's going to host it as well as the Warren Affordable Housing Corporation. They are, um. Working on a project on the town hall property in Warren. So we're going to meet there. The commissioner of the Department of Housing is going to come. You are all invited. It's usually pretty fun. We've got food. Awards, uh, the commissioner comes to talk. So that's going to be on October twenty-third, which is a Monday in the evening. If you want to come out to Warren, um, check it out. Um, we would love to see you there. Um, and then what we usually do is like a short in-person event, and then we follow it with. A series of webinars, um, on topics of interest to our local housing organizations. Um, and our towns. We're going to do, I think, a state legislators panel to talk about what happened in the last legislative session. In terms of housing affordability and what might happen in the next legislative session. Um, and, um, we might regroup on the conservation and affordable housing topic. Um, so. Uh. So again, we will, uh, make sure that you guys get an invite to any of those you might want to, to attend. So just look out for that, um, invitation and registration information if you want to come. And next. I just wanted to mention this to you all. Um, as you know, your land use commissioners have to do a training now. Um, the training, um, that we did, uh, with the cog that we offered, um, was virtual. Um, and many of them did take advantage of it. If you are near Waterbury and/or you think any of your land use commissioners want to drive to Waterbury for an in-person training. This is not just affordable housing. It's also kind of basics around roles and responsibilities and site plan reading. Um, is happening on September thirtieth. Um, because I agreed to do the affordable housing portion of the training as I did at cog. They said that anybody from the cog area can attend the training for free. So, um, I believe Emily sent this out to your, uh, land use. Officials, but if you're interested, I can send it to you again to remind them. Um, that it's available and they just have to use the code L C C H O and they can go for free. Um, so, you know, again, I know them, a lot of them are trying to get their training in and they might not have been available for the cogs. Uh, virtual training, um.
And I think this, this one would, if they are able to go for the whole thing, it would satisfy like their entire, um. Credits Emily for.
Yeah, it's a whole Saturday. Um, but, you know. Um, okay. Um, one thing I wanted to mention, I know Leo, um, knows about this. Um, as you all know, one thing we look at to sort of figure out, um, the need. And their communities is the waiting lists that your existing affordable housing developments. However, we know that that's really not a good way to determine need. Um, some people, when they find out how long the waiting lists are at your existing developments, don't bother applying. So they never get on the waiting list. Um, what we wanted to do is try to have some easy way of folks accessing the applications. Um, for your existing affordable housing developments, but also tell us. What they need, um, so that we can have a better sense of. Do people need one bedrooms? Do they need two bedrooms? Are they seniors? Are they families? What kind of incomes, um, do they have? Um, so that it can help us when we're applying for funds to Department of Housing and it can help. Your local housing groups when they're thinking about what to build, whether to do more one bedrooms or two bedrooms, for example. Um, if we have a better sense of what the real need is. So this is an online form. Um, we're hoping that you might consider putting it on your town website. And basically what it'll do is it will send me an email. If they want an application for, uh, specific development, they can ask for it. And then I will send it to the property manager of that. Um, development. Um, so again, it's a way to give your residents access to those resources. Um, easier than they can potentially find right now. Sometimes you have to actually drive to the development. And knock on the door and be there when the property manager is in the office and ask for an application. That's kind of a high barrier for some folks. So we wanted to give them a way to express their needs. Um, so that we can keep track of them and also request an application. So I can send this around to you all. Again, it's literally just like a link to a smart form, a smart sheet form. Um, I think Leo is, did, or is going to put it in the newsletter.
Yes, because these guys, I don't send my newsletter to these guys because I'm.
Okay.
They're not that interested. But I did send it to your social service providers. So it's in there.
So you might hear about it from them to get it on your town website. But again, the more website, the local housing organizations have it as well, and. Many of them are going to put it on their websites, but the more it's out there, the more people will find it. And the more we'll know specifically about what the needs of your residents are. So that we can try to meet them when we have the opportunity to put a project together. Um. Next. Um, I think this is my last slide. I just wanted to reiterate that the Regional Housing Council is, um, no more. Um, the members of the Regional Housing Council. Some of which, but there's some additional ones that are listed there. Um, they voted to basically reorganize as an association of. Um, housing organizations in the region. Um, basically because the housing council kind of format was very dated. It came from legislation that happened a long time ago when there was actually money for regional housing councils. The governor at that point was appointing people. To the housing councils. None of that is happening anymore. Um, so it came with a lot of strings attached that name. That weren't helping with the function of this group, which is really. For the nonprofit organizations to be able to share information and resources about what's going on in their town, how they solved. Challenges, what are the funding opportunities coming up? So they just get together four times a year and have that conversation. Sort of like the roundtable that, um, uh, the broadband guy was talking about. Um, so, um. So they are going to keep meeting. They're just not going to be the Regional Housing Council. Um, and so they're not going to be asking your towns for the annual. Um, and so they're not going to be asking your towns for the annual a hundred dollar dues. Frankly, a hundred dollars per town didn't really help them do anything anyway. Um, so, um, and the cog is not going to have to administer that little bit of my trickling in every year. Um, but I did want to just mention it to you because. You might still hear us refer to them as a regional housing council for a while, they haven't decided on a new name yet. Um, again, uh, we will be inviting cog um representation to attend those meetings if any of you want to attend. They are, they are open to you, um, that that council format just wasn't worth the effort. Um, so it's now. Um, again, sort of an association of of housing nonprofits in the region. Um, is that it? Yeah, so tho- those are the things I just wanted to update you all on. Um, that we're working on and, you know, I'm happy to take any questions or comments or feedback anybody might have. Sorry, I'm so close to the camera.
Any questions for Jocelyn? Thank you, Jocelyn.
Thank you.
Uh, transportation planning update, Casey.
Um, there's just two amendments on, two amendments from your agenda package. Uh, one is for the replacement of the retaining wall in Norfolk. And then a second is the replacement of traffic control signals at various locations. I know they're quite lengthy, but the one that's in our area is in. So we're seeking new replacements forward.
Are there any uh updates on the program?
I mean, yeah, so the last, the most recent correspondence that we received um from the email that I yesterday was the fact that they informed us that. The D O T has not yet finalized the grant award yet, um, they have some issues of securing resources for. Engineering and structability reviews, and this took a little bit longer than expected. Uh, they informed us that they are back on track now and hope that they'll have something to submit to the front office approval early or mid-October. Um, since this is a new program, they said they had to get some kinks out of the system, yeah, but the good news is is that they did include ten million for this year. Um, in the September bond commission request for the program, so they do plan to make awards um this year, so we definitely will. We should be all set, so thank you for your patience.
Yeah, I just add to that, I mean, obviously, we kind of, if you didn't expect to have some kind of delay in this, then I think that, you know, based on best past experience, it'd be. Be surprised, but uh, but I think the good news is that they're going to increase the funding, so uh, you know, we had the most projects uh. That were submitted uh to this program out of the entire state, um, you know, partly because we were supposed to submit the most because we're rural, but. Uh, we we overloaded the coffers, which is great because uh they saw that and they're trying to respond. Try to accommodate all those requests, so that's a good thing, we're showing that the program. Uh, has a need and that's good, so it just might take a little bit, take a little bit longer, that's that's all. Um, the only thing I might add is that we had a public works equipment collaborative meeting uh yesterday at your road supervisors uh for all your municipalities. Kind of had a light showing, but it was a pretty good conversation, um, I don't know if it had anything to do with the the rain yesterday, it just keeps raining. Um, but uh, we had a good conversation, one of the topics that came up was the uh, Tom, I think you brought that up. Uh, the the equipment rental process and uh. What we're doing is internally, we're we're trying to change the way we do this to kind of establish a little bit more check and balances and accountability. From our side to to the towns receiving side to try to streamline the process, make it better. Uh, for everybody involved, the users, the host towns, the uh, uh, the staff here at NH cog, and of course, uh. Those of you who are are interested in the budget and making sure that things are paid in the fiscal years are supposed to be paid, so. Uh, we're gonna try and uh continue to work with them on this, uh, they were very appreciative and interested in this, so. Um, you know, uh, we're gonna be at a better place is what it comes down to, um, and it's just some of the one examples, some of the improvements that we hope to make here soon. On a number of different levels, so I just wanted to kind of bring like to that as well. I don't think there was really anything else that was. Of interest to this group right now.
Discussion with the Morton salt contract.
Yeah, yeah, Morton salt, yeah, we had the discussion, and you you already know that. In the two years uh that we've been, I've been doing this, uh, you know, it's almost a hundred percent increase in the salt prices. Um, and uh, looking at the caper region purchasing council, which again, you all have access to if you're interested in other services and 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 uh. And other products, um, just let us know, but uh, the pricing there was very consistent within pennies of each other, I guess, uh, is with what we got with Morton. So it is what it is, you know, it's ninety something dollars a. A ton for treated, so. Uh, hopefully that stabilized a little bit, but um, that's where we're at.
On the rentals, how are you tracking the rentals, do you keep it in Excel or?
Uh, so well, yeah, so it, uh, I'm not sure how, we have papers. Normally, typically what was happening is that we'd just get the paperwork, we would put it in a file. Uh, invoices would be uh, would be produced based on that paperwork. It's kind of archaic, so we're trying to bring it into the twenty first century with, I think we're using spreadsheets, I know we're changing our form. Which is more digital and electronic, and we're going to uh. Uh, that's gonna be distributed not just to uh the folks that are using it. Um, one idea I had too, when we have time, is I want to go back. And uh, basically, just maybe five years and figure out what what equipment is most used over that period of five years. What is, what is mostly being circulated? Because at one point in time, all this apparatus was was purchased. Um, and some of it's not being used as much, you know, obviously depreciating, it's getting older, um, but. Uh, we want to get an idea of of the usage pattern over the last five years or so, and that can help dictate how we make decisions moving forward, so. There's a, we need a kind of a deeper dive into this is what it comes down to.
I'd be concerned with going forward, it'd be nice to have a quarterly summary for everybody here to see. Whether it's the sewer sucker or whatever else is going out, you know.
Yeah, and we talked about that too.
Or how much, how much downtime that's sitting versus.
Right.
Being used.
Exactly, Sarah has, you want to add something?
So, um, how it stands out, it's. So I have to wait until I guess she, um. In the public works, pardon, they're outside busy and stuff, so they aren't, they aren't really focused on the paperwork at this point, when I get it. Um, as you know, there were some hiccups in the past with uh some other towns that I think. We smoothed out, but it brought to light the fact that. How the system is working is not working. Um, so I've created, with the help of Casey and Leo, um, we've created a P V F form, filling, dropping, we went over it yesterday with the public works. Formants who were there, um, got some good feedbacks, we're gonna go back and rethink that, and it's gonna be a system of. They email me the form along with um the rental town. Everybody approves, I'll do a billing and I'll send it to the rental town, or, yep, the rental town and whoever is instructing their. There's checks and balances all the way around. Um, so that's, that's the process that we're working on now, we're just gonna finalize that sheet by E V F and send it out, I want the instructions all ready to go. Hoping it just streams, streamlines everything for everybody, and that way also. There's documentation, we know, we know when it's happening, I'm, you know, I don't. Know when things are happening. The host town doesn't say to me, oh, this person did this, or the rental towns aren't saying to me, um, hey, we rented this in July. I didn't go for it, so this way it's just, everybody's on the same page, everybody's in the know, and it's easier to trust.
Yeah, and one other, uh, now you're explaining that, it just reminded me, uh, traditionally what was happening is that we would uh, basically, it was. The the bill, the invoice was was calculated based on number of days that it was, you know, utilized. But what we found is that not, that's not always the case, sometimes, well, you never charge for weekends, obviously, but. Uh, there may be days where it wasn't in use, but it was there, and so we were charging by the day because that's the way it had always been done. What we discussed with the 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 group yesterday is that maybe we'll we'll standardize the day to, I think it was eight hours. Uh, and then, so we have a, we have a beginning mileage and end mileage, take the difference, divide by eight, and there you have a number of days, and that's how we would charge.
That is not on us.
The chair.
He did make it very clear too, like it is not the cog's responsibility to put how many days on. That would be the host town's responsibility when they sign it, um, so even if they have it for ten days, but it was only used for eight. They have to do that, that's not our responsibility, that just aren't there. So, um, that's one of the other issues that was on there, um. They weren't very clear these forms, um, who's signing off on them, who the host town was, who the rental town was, um, you know, who they're writing. Not always the best writers, like doctors can't write, you know, so, um, trying to differentiate and going back and forth. And they weren't really raised on there, which was another like problem in passing level of the left, so, um. Like I said, moving forward, um, we do. I could say we would want to, if anybody's interested in it, wants to see that, and we're very grateful there. From the first letter, we'd be greatly appreciated too, but I, I listen, I'm very interested to look at that, but we seem to have a pretty good understanding of a lot of.
Well, I understand that, and I rent a lot of equipment, and then there's two weeks, there was a five-day work week, but I get charged for three more rentals, well, there's seven day weeks. Days or days.
Yeah.
Just fill out the form, it's almost nine days, but some level of accountability, but you're keeping it for a weekend because. Somebody could be running it on the weekend and doing OT and pushing it.
Or, you know, they get it on a Friday and start to to Friday afternoon, start first thing, like, you know, so there's, there's a lot of different factors that.
Always this level for everybody.
We're going for it.
Sounds good. Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the stiff amendments.
Since we've done that, uh, all those in favor, or starting discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Are there any opposed? Are there any extensions? Motion passes. Okay, uh. Emily.
Okay, um, so I have a couple of different um pieces to my update. Um, so the first one, the E D D designation shift, and Dawn, if you have any, you want to take it or, you know, add a.
I'll add whatever you say.
Okay, um, so Dawn is our E D C chair, so I wanted to ask. Um, so NH cog, as many of you are aware, has been the administrator of E D A grant funds while working in partnership with the Northwest Connecticut E D C. Which has been our um committee that has been uh helping to update and uh implement the SEDS. For us, um, and that's been going on since January twenty fourteen. So over the better part of a decade, um, NH cog has been the staffing function and administrative function for. E D D partnership planning grant, um, the coronavirus aid relief, um, so, you know, many grants from the E D I. Um, so this summer though, it, um, right after we had our charrette actually for the SEDS, it was brought to our attention that. Um, this, this is actually um, um, a challenge for the E D A because on their books. They have the Northwest Connecticut E D C as the E D D designate, um, not NH cog. So, and I think that that was, um, I think it also has to do with, you know, when the the uh Litchfield. Council for elected officials merged with the other um regional painting group. Um, you know, I think that there was probably, maybe, may have been some confusion, but in any event. Um, pretty much the end result is that, um, we're in. At year two of a three-year planning grant cycle for the partnership planning funds to update the SEDS and continue to implement the current one. Um, and so E D D, uh, E D A, um, required that. We go through a designation shift, so, um, instead of the Northwest Connecticut E D C being the official. Economic Development District, that the cog becomes the official Economic Development District. So that will just allow us, um, as we have been doing for the better part of a decade. To um apply for grant funds through the E D A for the SEDS. And to carry on, um, and apply for any other grant funds that uh might serve the communities in the region. So nothing will change on the face of everything, um, you know, everything will operate the same way. Um, it's just that the cog will now be the official um E D D as, you know, and on the books at E D I, so, um. I don't know if you have anything to add.
There's a lot of money at stake here. It's all for the benefit of all the towns for economic development or. Things we can do over the past years as a result of, you know, broadband expansion, resulted in boom health, et cetera, et cetera. And having the cog be the E D D is largely administrative, I think the intention in. The Economic Development Corporation will remain as a. Committee or the subcommittee is still reporting to the cog. And the cog will administer the funds and find, and be the formal act of the grants. So if you do it right, you get the money, you continue to do what you've been trying to do. The key issue right now, having their party committee letters.
Hmm.
Um, they, E D A, federal E D A has asked for. At least fifty percent of the cog members sent a letter saying we support this. Change the, we're going to the cog, that the administrative activity is designated, and that's if you guys want to stick so far.
Yeah, we have, I, yep, I think as of this morning, we have seven or eight.
Have you sent a letter? There's a template, just modify the template with a few sentences. Sign it, send it, Emily, and so we can submit to the federal government and check the box on something that is very routine. We're talking over a two-year, a three-year period. Of fifty to a hundred thousand dollars a year funding for activities.
Um, we get from E D A, we get um a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in a three-year period to do the. SEDS work.
It's important not to blow this up, please. Have him send a letter, we go back to town all the time, and then we. Find the template, or send out the note again with a template. Modify it, put it on your town letter and sign it, and please, you know, send it back.
Thank you.
Yeah, don't bail it, just uh.
Send it over to me, I had to upload, we actually had to go through a process of getting a a letter from the governor's office, so it's been a long. Uh, process to do this, just basically minor paperwork shift, but.
Yeah, I think the uh, and and to the point of the the funding levels, I think we have reason to believe that we may be getting seventy thousand per year for the next three-year cycle, so we're looking at. Two hundred and ten thousand, uh, so, you know, it's important, and really, the only thing that is really going to change, I think, is that the uh E D, the E D C will still come up with a budget. But the budget itself and the application for the grant might just be an approval item on our agenda, that's really the only difference.
And the reporting by the E D C to the cog. Can be determined by the cog, there's monthly reports, department reports, and whatever. Getting, you know, still act the same as it does now, not adding any additional work, because the cog members have already been doing. A hard work of this thing anyway.
Yeah. So, and he, you know, there's another piece of my update, um, if that's okay, I just was gonna talk about the SEDS um process. Something, and it's, it's sort of all connected because, um. Uh, we had our a charrette, so as you all know, we've, we've been in this process to update the five-year SEDS, and we have a SED that. Um, is expires in twenty twenty-three, so we have a little bit of time left here. Um, I have spoken to E D A about extending that time, which they are amenable to, given all that we've been through with the the designation shift and everything. Um, so we will come out with a really strong SEDS, but, um, right, it was, I think it was actually, we held the charrette, the first charrette for the SEDS. Public input to do a SWOT analysis on the region in terms of economic development. On July twelfth, and I think it was July thirteenth, I got the call from E D A that we needed to go through this fall. Machination to get the designation shift taken some time, so it took our attention away. Um, but the other thing that happened at the July twelfth charrette is that we had, um, met, some of you were there, um, Denise, I know you were there, thank you for coming, um, Henry, you were there. Um, we had fairly low attendance, and um, I know we had it in the day, um, but I do think that although that probably did contribute. I think just the, we've been learning, you know, the way we do business now, it's just different, we were kind of operating under a in-person kind of strategy with getting a lot of folks. Together in a room to, to do this SWOT analysis and follow us along, and um, we really came to the conclusion that we need to. Uh, find some other ways to do the engagement, so. In the process of the designation shift, I was testing out um several different um online engagement platforms. That could you work, and we really just kind of recently came to the conclusion that we need some expert help in that, so we are. Currently, you know, we're putting together um a little R F P, our quote process. To see if we can get some consulting help to do that, because we really do want the engagement to be strong. We're also um drafting up a scope of work that we continue to, with a consultant to actually write and produce the SEDS for us. Um, and then it, the other part is that we're still implementing the current SEDS while we're updating the old one. So on the implementation side, we're, we're getting an R F P together to get uh marketing consultants to continue to work on. Discover Litchfield Hills, so that's where we are with everything, um, I apologize. Um, I apologize if it seemed to be, you know, in bits and starts, but we've had a, you know, couple little hiccups along the way, but we're moving towards having a strong SEDs document, um, sometime after the beginning of the, the mid-year. So that's, that's that update, and I, I think the social media is under this too, so I'll just move through if that's okay. Um, so we had brought the, uh, idea of updating the COG website and potentially producing, um, some social media platforms for the COG to our last, um, special meeting, um, of the board that was in August. And, um, uh, you all had voted for us to move forward with the website update, but not the social media, and I think that you had um, kind of wanted to, uh, ask, re- revisit the social media issue at this meeting, so that's why we put that on the agenda. Um, I think with your package, you received a proposal that was from the one eleven group. Um, but I can also inform you that we had two other, we went out for two other quotes on this as well. Um, Civic Lift, um, was one, and there, uh, so one eleven group came in at about forty-nine hundred dollars, um, to, uh, produce, um, identify social media platforms, uh, get them up and running for us, get them connected with our website, and then also to potentially, um, help us think through the messaging and content that we could, could use there. Um, so that was at forty-nine hundred. Civic Lift, we also went out to, um, he gave me a range twenty-five hundred to five thousand, so I'm not exactly sure where we would fall in there, but it was generally the same items, you know, to, to help us, uh, get that up and running. And then we also went and asked our current, um, web host, um, I believe, well, that, um, called, uh, Colakisa, I can never remember how to pronounce his last name, but, um, and he actually ended up telling us that he would have to contract with an outside social media group if he was going to do our web update plus social media, because he does not do social media, so we would have to, um, so that was basically, no, I can't do that unless I contract with him. But that was where we were with all of that, so. If anyone wants to.
I just have a question, so who are we trying, who's our audience for that video?
When we do, my, my primary thought at this point, um, because many other COGS do that, do this, is that when you have certain projects such as the SEDs, or you have other, um, big, major planning projects, I know Casey's going to be, um, starting up a transportation, the regional transportation plan, um, we'll have to update our regional plan of conservation and development. When you're really doing like that engagement for that type of planning, and then trying to have, um, you know, the, the citizens of the region, your commissions, your boards, you know, people that are really involved, um, and just the general public understand what these plans mean, um, you know, it's, it's really a good platform for that. And along the way, when we're doing this planning, as planners, we're charged with getting the broadest, deepest engagement possible. And social media within the planning field has begun to be one of the best tools to be able to do that.
So I would just offer, would you consider then putting it back on our own town to Midwest, I can have connections that are already built, um, to do that?
Um, we could, yeah, we definitely could, um, I'm not sure, um, I would have to do a little bit of research on how many of your towns have social media platforms, um, that are the town platforms. I don't know that right now, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't think we're particularly looking for action at this meeting on this, if we want to continue to talk about and think about it.
Well, I think we were looking for action if people were ready, but, but not necessarily if not.
So it's a theory that staff would ramp messaging, and then we pay a third party writer to post message.
Um, actually, I think we could do that, I think what we had asked in the quotes was just the, the initial startup and helping us understand, um, messaging, you know, um. I think when a lot of folks go about doing this, if it's a company or a town or, you know, of an initiative, um, the best thing to do is to have some really concise, um, messages that you're always going to, that, you know, these are the themes that we're always posting on, so you don't get all over the place, so we were hoping it, hoping to have, um, you know, uh, this consultant help us craft those initial messages, and then he would be the ones to actually continue the posting and do, do all of that, which can be a heavy lift, but when you have a lot going on and a lot that you need, uh, input on, it can be helpful.
So it's a one-time cost?
The one, um, yep, the, the cost that I just outlined would be one-time.
Thank you.
So I, I think it's very about spending it, if you have the chance, then at the end of the year, the practice, okay, if we're working on, we need to continue, how do we get it to the individual towns, and is it worth it? I think it's sort of a pricey experiment, but I think it's probably worth one.
Pricey experiment that could be done in-house, right? And most towns have their own Facebook or Instagram accounts that take a little bit of staff time, and you're going to generate staff time to do it.
Because EDA, you want twenty towns to manage to have a media web post by the world.
That we, well, I would wager that both of our towns have social media presence already. So, but what I'm saying is, if the COG wanted to have one, if you're going to be losing staff time to the admin anyway, how hard is once you do the staff time to post the, and her main free website? Overall, I would question because of the, the need or enough that I believe is going on, how much the reach really is. Because I find that over the last year or two, social media reach is kind of filtered, unless you're paying first, sponsored content, you're not getting the reach used to get two years ago. But I just think it's something that could be done in-house for free. We're, we're already losing admin time, that's already built in.
So if you use good drawing, yes, you know, social media, I'll make you post your media in your town.
I can't, I can't even.
Oh, yeah.
Not even glad social media presence for their town, already either through their birthright then or whatever.
For me to decide what we will do in the town. Well, I don't know, other towns are, that, well, and I am not a social media expert.
Nor am I.
You know, a lot of towns have, with these grassroots talk of X-town or X-town talks or whatever, a lot of them have. But as everybody knows, and you probably do as well, it's an open forum and there's a lot of misinformation.
Those aren't in our town's stuff, those are out in this whole system.
Right.
I can totally use it for information sharing, I don't need anything.
Yeah, well, and that's the tough part, because, you know, you can go down a rabbit hole.
It's a, yeah, um, so I did the, I did set up some of Frog's first social media accounts when I was there, and we did, um, set up a social media policy along with it, one that was internal to our agency and one that was external. Um, and, you know, I think that the, they've actually really, um, ramped up their presence, and the nice thing about it is that it's, it's really also for the sake of transparency for the agency, you know, um, and yes, negative things come along, but if you have a really strong policy in place to handle that, it, you know, you can shut those things down pretty quickly.
Uh, Jean Speck has her hand though.
Oh.
Yeah, just quick, I think, um, this is heading in a really great direction. Um, one of the things that we found when we started to dip our toe in the pond of social media a couple of years ago was the, um, was being able, the legal side of it, so, um, none of the platforms archive any of this stuff. And if somebody, you know, whoever the author is of a comment or whatever can, um, pull that comment down, and you start to get into this sort of nitty-gritty rabbit hole of if, I'm sorry, if there was, you know, an issue or there was a, you know, a, a legal problem that came up, how do we, you know, screenshotting Facebook posts on your phone to capture that is, um, not likely to, to have much weight in a, you know, in litigation. So we found this, um, tool, software tool, it's actually a, it, they were just, um, purchased by Civic Plus, but it was a standalone called Archive Social, and so we pay them an annual subscription, and we can connect any social media account, um, to the Archive Social, and it immediately starts archiving everything about that, um, social media, you know, whether it's a page or, you know, however you have your social media, um, stood up, and while we haven't had to use it from a legal standpoint, we have, it's come in, it has definitely paid for itself in being able to track when people are saying, you know, terrible things on various social media platform, uh, you know, spheres. What we can't do is connect the community, um, obviously the community accounts, because they're not municipal, you know, that, they're not under municipal oversight, but it's definitely something, I think that in the mix of this whole process, you should absolutely, um, look into, um, expending, I, I think we pay a couple of thousand dollars a year for it, and it's very comprehensive, very simple, user interface is no-brainer if you want, um. Emily, I, you know, we can sit on Zoom and walk through our account, and I can show you, you know, the nuts and bolts of it.
Thank you.
Well, is there anybody that wants to action taken on this? That wants to make a motion? All right, so then we just table, we go next meeting. All right. Uh, Cannon?
Yeah, good morning, everyone, just real quick, I'll, I'll make this quick, even though there's a lot of stuff going on. First and foremost, uh, thank you to, uh, Charlie, Matt, uh, Todd, and everyone for the PDA process that we just went through. Uh, we went out with FEMA trying to see if we qualified for some, uh, public assistance, unfortunately, uh, we easily met the county threshold, but we did not meet the state threshold, so, um, official notification will be coming out at some point, but, uh, I talked to a few of you already in regards to this, but thank you for taking the time to take us out and all that good stuff, uh, committing some time to that. Getting a lot of inquiries regarding test case COVID, it seems to be making a little bit of a comeback right now. Uh, we are not maintaining a COVID warehouse, so to speak, or cachet of tests. So, um, you know, everyone that asked, it is because of the availability of these things, um, yeah, they cost money. But, um, you know, we're not, we're not planning at this time to, uh, establish a warehouse for those things, so, um, you're pretty much on your own to go out and get those. Uh, DPH did have some, um, they were committed to the schools, and I'm sure the torrent area health, which most of you are under here, um, you know, probably has a little cachet of their own, but, uh, you know, we're not keeping a cachet of that, so we're getting a lot of questions, you guys getting test cases, and then the Vans, if you know, you don't. Um, we're underway, uh, the state's underway on our hazard mitigation plan, um, we're trying to update that five-year cycle, it's coming through the addition year, so we're in the process, and started to do update that. We're also going through the, uh, accreditation process right now, the deficits, so we're going to start that cycle, um, so a lot of things going on there. Some, uh, dates for you guys, um, the LEOPs, the updated LEOPs to qualify for your, uh, five thousand dollars, if you update that, uh, through EMBG or the Emergency Management Performance Grant is, uh, January first, twenty twenty-four, so if your EMDs or whoever's working on that could get those to us, uh, we've started to receive some. Uh, but, uh, again, you update your plan, you get five thousand dollars, it's pretty much that simple. Uh, the other thing is, we just sent out a bunch of new information to the schools, this is for your information. Uh, there was some change in legislation, especially when it comes to drill logs, and we have to start to collect some information on that. So we, um, created a new log, uh, template for the schools that was just passed out to them. But also their updated plan is due November first, so most of them have noticed. Uh, but I just tell you guys because you guys, uh, all sign their plans, or should be signing their plans, so they should, uh, make sure that you have a peek at that. Um, so, uh, you can sign off on that. Um, yeah, so November first, they're due, the, uh, drill logs aren't due until, um, July first of next year or this year. So, uh, that information went out in the last, uh, we're kicking up the, uh, governor's annual, uh, exercise, uh, that we've normally done in the past, but we put a little damper on some of that, but, uh, the EKPI, we call it, exercise, I don't know English, at the afternoons all of us, but, um, October, uh, fourteenth and October eighteenth, there's two days. One being a Saturday, which is October fourteenth, the other one being Wednesday, I believe, which is October eighteenth. We'll be working with your folks to, uh, hopefully, uh, get your participation in that exercise that will take place in those two days. You only have to participate one day, uh, we do it two days to accommodate some of those folks that have volunteers and all that, so. Just to give you a heads up on that, so it's October fourteenth and October eighteenth. Our dates that, uh, we'll be doing that annual exercise, so. We're, we're ramping that up, like, that's all I have, uh, Mr. Chairman, plus the Vans.
Thank you, Johnny, any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Hey. We have time to squeeze through the municipal forum, if there are any comments, uh, about what's going on in your town that are interesting, guys, if you're, if you're new.
Sure, thank you very much. So in Winchester, I have, uh, put in my sixty days notice with the Florida Selecting, so, uh, this will not be my last meeting with all of you, but in October, this, it will be my last meeting. Um, a familiar face, Bob Dagger, will be joining you again after that for a limited term period of time, I don't think he gets much interest, and no offense to everybody here, but it's taken her after too long, given that he went into retirement. Um, but, uh, and the town is currently searching for a new town manager, if you know anybody who's interested, at least make sure that they're applying. Uh, as Johnson said earlier, we are looking, um, we are moving forward with a lease-to-sale, um, opportunity uh, with a local, uh, housing group that's going to put a number of apartments into an old elementary school building, uh, in town. And we recently kicked off, uh, Citizens Academy in an effort to try and reach out to, um, other residents of our town to try and get them more informed about municipal operations. We started that last night, and it was a huge success, uh, we were, we were there about forty-five minutes after, you had asked questions, um, and really working with our departments, that was, right now, so. Um, we've got a lot of things, irons in the fire in Winchester, our road plan is continuing, uh, along, and it's on track. Um, and we're continuing to seek every grant possible, it's just a, a brief, I think.
I'll be around a little longer than John, I'm sending in this year. November thirty-first is the final day for camps, it's a little bit for a lot of towns. And we've got a few, few more meetings, um. One small note of interest is, we got a grant, it's really foundation, the feasibility study on the pedestrian bridge across the farm river that connects it to the state forest in town, which I suspect it's a multi-million dollar project, if I'm ever forward, we're going to have an engineer from the Valley Lake square and what it would look like, and we think it'd be a big bonus to people to park in one park picket area, whatever, walk over to the other park, and whatever, it's just something that we may or may not be able to afford in the future. And the other thing I'll keep the group informed, we're probably going to join the purchasing council, because we're working with the Gordian Group, who's under the aegis of the Frog and the purchasing council to do construction contracts, where we have a steep grant to bring water lines from Winstead into town. And it's a nightmare trying to get the RFP in place, trying to get all the paperwork, trying to get all documentation done. And the Gordian Group is pre-qualified, so you don't have to run competitive bids, because they've already done it. Selective contractors come up with standard pricing for construction activities. I'm just starting that process now, which if it works, will save a lot of bureaucratic paperwork nightmares. I'll let you know how it goes, I know Emily asked me very good, and I, I did a small project with them a number of years ago. But it's a very efficient way to go out to bid, satisfy the state requirements, and get a contractor on board.
Yep, okay, um, I hope to be here in November, I'm running, I have a, an opponent, so we'll see how that goes. So we have about, what, eight weeks until the collection. Um, currently, the town of Litchfield is working, um, really closely with the, uh, Board of Ed for the Region twenties transition, seeing as the first time it's ever been done in Connecticut, uh, taking a municipal school and, and adding it, merging it with a, um, a regional school system, created a new regional school system, so there's a lot of, um, work that has to be done with transplanting properties and FFB and, um, OPEB, you know, pension benefits from prior retirees, so it's taking a lot of my time right now. Um, Litchfield's working on our America two fifty celebration for twenty twenty-six, it's way in advance, but we are hoping to have a lot of engagements. I don't think the town are working on that, but, you know, I don't know if I'll be, but I'm, I'm hoping to help organize it. Um, we do a lot of dating projects before the, uh, asphalt plan votes, maybe in November, and the courthouse renovation is in full sw. And the courthouse renovation is in full swing every day, pretty much every day, even the weekends. Um, they are working on transforming that property into the twenty room, three people town. So exciting, it's loud, but it's, uh, you know, there's a little bit of some things. The party, but for the most part, I think, uh, you know, the fifteen months it's gonna take to do is gonna be all over.
Uh, well, I should be here in November unless something really goes down. Uh, we did do our East Shore Road Culver. We had applied for local bricks program grant to that, which didn't get like while we did, you know, for about a third of the cost of what it would have been if we had gone to that grant program, which was very nice. Uh, getting up from working with a local contractor and utilizing our highway crew quite a bit during this project. And on the same road, we're paving, uh, East Shore Road on Vanley. We're paving that road, uh, the villain bathing this week. Uh, we were able to utilize a half million dollar seed grant, kind of the most the cost of that, very nice. And we've completed a number of market projects in town, including, uh, H D A C at our firehouse. Get the project stuff. Without worrying about the M P.
Well, after, after the last year, I kind of, I kind of wish I wasn't going to be here. Unfortunately, maybe fortunately, I will be. Um, it's been very quiet in Norfolk the past two days. So I shouldn't say very quiet, quieter. Um, as everyone knows, we're still working on our cleanup in the gas spill, it's probably going on one road in town until at least, uh, early November or early October, rather. And then they have to go visit a couple of other sites, um, for mediation. Uh, as John mentioned, uh, after the flooding in July, of which we had two bridges completely washed out. That have been working at the DOT to replace, um, the cost of those two bridges, it's about five to eight million. Uh, which we hope that, uh, things are gonna go well for the DOT, you could say, very, very problematic right now. But the other part of that is that we have about, um, we're at, right now, we're at about six hundred thousand dollars in other damages. Uh, damage to roads, so, um, I'm working on that, so I'm trying to find the funds for that. Um, this past weekend, we had a structure fire in town and, uh, the house is completely destroyed. Um, it happened, or I shouldn't say early Sunday morning. Um, and the one thing I want to say, and I can't say enough about our emergency services people, including, um, representatives from Democrats, I mean, we had, I think we eleven fire companies have the house, uh, Saturday and Sunday morning. The downside of it was that there was a fire hydrant right in front of the house that was not operating. Um, fortunately, um, because of all the training that all the fire, that uh, they managed to utilize services with another fire hydrant, which is right down the street, one tanker truck. Um, and, uh, you know, their training pays off all the time because, because of the way they can, uh, reply. So I cannot say enough about that. Um, but, you know, things are, you know, we're pushing here, it's, it's not been an easy year, so.
Saltberry's good. We, um, we have a lot of work, trying to get some more composting going, like many of them. Um, we have almost a hundred units of affordable housing in the books or planned, but then just something like that. Ten or fifteen of which are approved and starting almost, and, uh, the rest are in concept. All of those are on town property. Uh, that seems to be the, the defining thing, that land, land is too expensive now. So forget if it has sewer or water here. Um, and we're doing a bridge, like many of you, and yeah, but a lot of conservation work going on. Um, we, we find that conservation and preservation of land and affordable housing, but I completely can't imagine. Um, all we do is change the zoning in high-density areas and that's that. Um, instead of, uh, two acre zoning, we can have a whole different budget then, as it is. Seems to be in a way to solve that problem, but I, that's, it's good. We do all the houses fall.
John, thanks for the great notes. I appreciate it. Uh, any, you know, any time. Uh, unfortunately, I will not be here in November. Can't come soon enough after the last few weeks. We found our data making headlines in the weather, we go again, uh, in the Lake Worthen Hall. Uh, we had our first primary that, uh, on Tuesday for Seattle Selectment. That, uh, did not really go well with solid matters and we, uh, I, uh, former vice selectman won two hundred ninety-six, one hundred thirteen against the opponent. So, um, there'll be four people running on, uh, ballot in November, who can go select them and they'll be choosing to select them all. And that was the Republican primary, which, uh, we had, it was the most one to keep them on that, it was a bad situation. As you saw in the paper that we get the headlines for a basic matter in the town hall, North Dana. It wasn't a scary event. I was not here. The resident Cooper just left probably fifty minutes prior to home, it was still after three. Um, a secretary called me, we had a problem, got hold of the resident Cooper and he said, well, let's step down to town hall. Get everybody out, uh, we called the bio people that worked in, uh, Norfolk, they came down, environmental people came in on Friday morning at nine o'clock. Uh, to clean up the matter, what happened is Paula came in to the town hall, went to the resident Cooper's office, tried a door, left, walked back out, we got him on video, we have security cameras, we saw the whole thing on cameras. Went back out to his truck, came in with some envelopes in his hand, went back to the resident Cooper's door, slid them underneath the, off the door, and he had diesel matter on it. The place stunk like, you know what, it was unbelievable, the smell. Um, the reason why he's been a person in town, Curtis knows a lot of his family, he's been there for twenty years. He's gotten over one hundred sixty stump tickets, and they claim he's a informant. Uh, but this was only not, he's in jail right now, still in New Haven, waiting a court date. Uh, and, and the reason why he did it, our resident Cooper gave him six tickets on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, two each. He came in Thursday afternoon and did this. It's a little mess, you know, it's a hell of a way to get in the paper.
It's heating tickets or what?
Parking tickets. When you saw his house, he parks out in the middle of the street, he works on his vehicles over town street. Uh, people with more complaints, uh, he changes oil right over top of a tech basin, uh, you know. And he runs, but I'm sure, uh, trucks, uh, right now he's got two parts in McDonald's, he was cutting trees down, you go in there, they're still sitting there with no license plate signed, no registration, he runs at night. He's been picking it, pays them, but doesn't base them one day. Uh, so, it, it's, I just, I can't get off quick enough. Uh, but hopefully this will stick. They, they had him on six pounds, but the prosecutor dropped it down to three pounds. One was a criminal mischief and all that, so we got, but he's in jail, he hasn't posted bond until his next court date. So there's no plan to follow. Uh, so that was, you know, especially for the ladies, you know, there are all ladies in the town hall and I think we have the cameras and need to see it, it's right there, it's just that. But on a good note, we do have an EV charging station, it's all complete. It'll be up and running on Tuesday, when I need to defuse, you can set up the D, uh, that went well. Uh, the community health and wellness, it's hoping to be up and running in January. Uh, the building's going along very well in town, it's moving fast. And so hopefully that'll be there in, in that part. Uh, again, I'm gonna miss this, it's been six years and, uh, with this coming down and seeing everybody and all the friends I've dated to different towns and it's good, I don't miss it, um, well, I get over it. Uh, it's been a great, it's been a great experience, you know, to meet everybody and you're putting things in different towns and everything, so. I'll be here in October, I don't know November, I've made that decision yet, if I'll come to it or if you can't, I will be here.
It's gonna be hard for us to repeat that. Um, I will be here, relative to have the four-year terms, so I'll be in my, uh, second year. So I will be, I mean, um, I'll, I'll make it brief, I think the big thing that, uh, in Burlington right now, we, uh, art can give it and art can take it away. We just got a bid for a fire pumper, um, we were expecting about, uh, seven hundred eighty thousand several months back. And they came in at one point three million, um, we, uh, we were looking at a twenty-five month new time, we're now looking at a forty-three month new time. So I don't know if other communities are, are in the same boat, um, you know, I think that, uh, the, the drivers, that, that everybody's buying fire stuff. So it's, it's matters of buying demand, we are concerned that, uh, at some point, um, you know, the market will crash when all this, uh, when the man dries up. We are trying to look at, um, reconfiguring or different chassis. Um, and if anybody, I heard that, uh, Torington may have, uh, gone out for some, uh, fire trucks recently, so if, if any advice from surrounding towns as to, um, if they've experienced this and, uh, whether, um, you know, there's, there's, uh, alternatives, uh, I don't know that there are any, I think they're just gonna have to swallow the film and, and blow over.
You know, our former, calls the fire departments did redo a fire truck at half the cost.
And, uh, you know, that, of course offline, if anyone wants to email me, um, with, uh, some suggestions, that'd be great.
Um, town of Cannon, uh, we're progressing with our, uh, first real, uh, new construction, um, uh, housing, uh, we are, we have sold our firehouse. Uh, that's gonna be converted into a gym and a health center in town. Uh, we have, uh, gotten an NRES grant from EverSource, thank you, EverSource. Uh, and, uh, we are going to be, uh, doing that, uh, which is a solar farm, uh, that will provide enough solar power to offset all the, uh, uh, costs of the buildings in town, uh, that are owned by the town. Which is about fifty-five thousand dollars or so, that's, uh, that's a big, big thing. Uh, and other than that, I am, uh, going to be leaving. Uh, I've made the decision not to run again. Um, and maybe the town would make that decision for me anyway. But, uh, I'm very happy and, uh, plan on splitting my time between France and the US, so I'm moving on.
That's awful.
Total power base, what? Your total power bill for municipal buildings is fifty-five thousand. Well, that loses the school.
No, he's saying that, um.
That's all, that's all. We're in the second smallest town in Connecticut, so let's, let's be reasonable here. My, my, my life's outside of here.
Um, I, I will be here in November, uh, on front of, on post, um. You know, the, the storm in July, uh, left a mess in Ocean, you know, so, um, we got a great crew there. All our roads are put back together and paved, we were hoping to get some FEMA money, but apparently we're not. Um, our biggest, um, culvert up on, uh, North Ocean Road. Um, it really got washed away, we did a patch until we, we were hoping to get some FEMA monies there, but apparently town had to take care of the cost of that and the total pipe, um. Per season is underway in Ocean, you know, since July, it seems like every Friday at the Ocean Fair, uh, doing the essential command and safety meeting with state police and the fire chief and fire marshal and John and everybody in the brother, it's, uh, takes a lot of time. I would go out to that fair every Sunday Friday and I'm gonna wait for everybody to show up. Um, the subdivision in town, um, on Holmes Road, uh, probably, uh, probably worst guys. Um, they did everything themselves, the only thing we had to do was hire a, um, a blasting company to manage drone blast. So, you know, it's nice having a crew that is, um, experienced machine operators, I tell you, who built the whole road. It's, we save a lot of money, unbelievable, you got your own machinery, it's crazy. Um, of course, like everybody else, all our roads are gonna be paved and chip sealed down. Um, LTs and Frontier, um, they did run their fiber optics, uh, run seventy-five, eighty percent, is done in Ocean. Um, often I think it's probably a little bit higher, but Frontier is only doing Route Four from East Street North all the way to, I think, Forget Road, halfway up East, um, excuse me, um, Sixty-three. And then all around Woodridge Lake and a little bit down, down Old Middle Street, so Frontier is not doing the whole town. Uh, but, you know, people have access, it's right in my driveway, so. Um, if I needed, I wanted, uh, we got a new, um, you know, Bob Valentine resigned from being our EMD. So we appointed Shail Garzal, brings, uh, thirty-one years as a E and T fireman at the Ocean Fire Company. And, um, we have a new deputy, uh, EMD, Eric Stengel, senior, brings, uh, I think, like forty-one years and then Waterbury PD, Blue Panic and, uh, AMS, so. We're in good hands, they're gonna work alongside Chamoletary until, you know, Jim, Jim Stein, you know, I think he'll probably stay on for a while. But, um, I'm really happy with those two, they're really great people. So, um, that's all, everything goes, everything's slow. Well, in Culver, they're gonna have a new selectmen in Oklahoma, so I'm joined in that's accident. We've got three bridges in progress right now, hopefully the weather stops raining here. It'll be done before the end of November, but one in particular really is gonna create a need that probably somehow is going to. With the seed grants we applied for last year, we were able to get one parking lot and two rows paved, we applied for the need. Twenty twenty-three, twenty-four seed grants. I applied for three rows, one parking lot, so hopefully that'll get through. And like everybody else, it's weather, the storm in July, we had about everything, one of our dirt lanes washed out. One is washed out so bad, I would really hope the new get to come out, because there's no way we're, we're gonna be able to. The other road that's in really bad shape was the dirt road, it's been, been being heavily used, it's a huge one, it's, it's out. And every time it rains, it's, it washes out, we go put more stuff down and Tuesday comes, it's gone again. Frontier did come through, we've got fiber optic, I wanna say probably ninety-nine percent of COVID. There's one little subdivision that's underground wiring, they didn't get it. And there's a couple of houses down the one and three. Headed down towards Winston, hopefully they did this, finish that, I'll guarantee. I'll probably, I mean, I wouldn't have had me to hear it, and I told my man, they not, he just didn't go on patient. I'm all done, twenty, I'm all done, I'm looking forward to retiring third time. Go over, anybody ask me to volunteer for you.
Thanks. Big rats. Good, I, I'm definitely looking forward to it, yeah. For everybody who's decided to take down retirement.
We're only gonna go with the coffee.
It could be a long coffee. Uh, the usual stuff with all dating stuff, just like people have said, oh, yeah, I will be here in November. Um, our big initiatives have kind of all really come into fruition, our sale of our watering sewer system will go through first week in October. Uh, you know, happy to report that everything we kind of projected to be true five years ago is coming true. So the big winners are our water customers, we'll see an immediate level, uh, twelve percent drop in rates. Uh, and then the town will use some of the proceeds to install sewers in Pi Meadow, protect our water, uh, drinking water wells and subsidize rates, so the sewers will also come down to about ten percent. Final subsidy package will be determined at our next meeting. I didn't mention it last time, but another two-year project, we consolidated two or three fire departments. That doesn't come easy in a small town, took two years. We are expecting Wetland's approval for, I think, the largest development in Litchfield County, three hundred units. Uh, what, two-thirds of which will be senior housing on Route Forty-four, close to the Canton Town Line to come through. They had to withdraw their application and resubmit because of these six or seven hundred-page environmental study. Just took that long to get a view. And really not a lot of weapons, it's all stormwater that they were doing. The ARCA, our pickleball basketball court thing is coming up, our steep grant for our bathrooms really, as Tom was saying, very hard if you put in on small jobs and especially with steep rate requirements for the small business and women and minority-owned business stuff, they just don't want it, very difficult, so of course you pay, you know, significant premium on what it is, and everybody's experiencing the cost of the truck thing. So, that's really all I have, but things are kind of good, and I'm trying to just continue to keep the hard work out of the new squares. You know, all the other stuff, but things are good. Quiet. I know it's online, Eleanor.
Hello. So in the city of Torrington, first, before I get into what's going on in the city of Torrington, I do want to wish luck to all those incumbents that are seeking office. A few of you that are seeking office, and I do hope to see everyone who is seeking retirement. I'm a little envious right now, to be honest. So roadwork, just like everybody else, you know, it's the season and we've been fortunate, we've been able to really put a lot of the bonded funds that the voters approved in two thousand and eighteen to work. Over the last four years, we've been able to pave over thirty-three miles of roads in the city of Torrington, which is something to really take stock in considering we've been piecemealing roadwork for the past forty years. We also just completed the installation of the Bog Road Bridge. I see Mike Criss is on the line. This is a bridge that connects Torrington and Harwinton. And this is the first type of bridge installation of its type to occur in the state of Connecticut, so we'll be working with ONG to do some kind of a press conference and ribbon cutting to talk a little bit about this new bridge installation that we think might be an option for a lot of municipalities, especially if their bridges that municipalities share. Our animal control facility is complete, we just passed inspection. We'll be reaching out to the CAG offices to coordinate a ribbon cutting for that also. This is a facility that wouldn't have happened had it not been for the CAG's site, for sites to invest in this property, invest in this, in this facility. So, and investment more than just your vote and your constant support, but also the financial support. Storm damage in the city of Torrington, it's incredible, you know, as a valley, all the roads, all roads leading to Main Street drain downhill, our private property owners are screaming from the rafters with the amount of damage that they've been experiencing. These are unprecedented storms, brand-new Highland Avenue roadwork was undermined. And it's a washboard for any of you that are trying to travel down that street lately. So we need to do some significant work on that, and like Ocean, I'm thinking, you know, I don't know if we're meeting, we're meeting any of the benchmarks from FEMA. We have a bar grant that was granted to the city of Torrington by DECD. This is the Brownfield Area-Wide Revitalization Grant, it's a planning grant. It's focused on the former Brunswick manufacturing site on Route Four at the intersection of Midgen Avenue. You know, this is a great opportunity for us to work with that property owner and the surrounding property owners to determine what is the best reuse of that property. And being a major gateway of the city of Torrington for many of the towns in the northwest corner, we, we feel that this is going to change the landscape of that, that gateway. Demolition is scheduled for the former Torrington Standard Plant again on Route Four along that gateway. It looks like October is when we'll start to see those buildings coming down. Changing the landscape again from anybody traveling from the northwest corner into the center of Torrington. But also positions that property for redevelopment as a business park, so we're really excited about that. I'm working on populating our fair rent commission, the state required that we appoint this commission, we're one of those municipalities. Over twenty-five thousand in population requires us, mandates us to establish this commission. Our ordinance has been set, I'm, you know, two-thirds of the way of populating the commission. And it's already getting complaints from tenants around the area for an opportunity to get a hearing before that board. The question on the fire trucks, I'll tell you, the city of Torrington is looking to replace one as well. We know that there's such a lead time to bring any of these apparatus into our fleet. So we, with our last effort, actually entered into an MOU, the truck takes such a long time to be built that we entered into an MOU so that we can pay some of the expense in one year. The final expense in the second year when it would probably be positioned for delivery. Yeah, trucks, plow trucks, fire apparatus, it's, it's a challenge for us as well. So I think that's about it, and yeah, I'm one of those four-year terms, so I'm here for the next two years.
Thank you.
We have Jean and Gordon.
Jean and Gordon, okay. Let's go with Jean.
Sorry, didn't realize I was on mute. Just to follow the battle rhythm here, I am not running again. But once again, our unique little town has multiple candidates running for first electmen, one Democrat and two unaffiliated. So it'll be an adventure to watch that. As my father used to say when I was a young girl, there's nothing like a hard deadline to motivate me. So there's just a ton of issues and initiatives I'm trying to wrap up. I'm also working on a succession planning document that I hope to leave the next person on my desk. Just to create some sort of continuity of operations, which didn't happen when I came in four years ago. Continuing to work on Phase Two of the Streetscape Project, it's been to DOT once already for review, we've had two info sessions with the public. And some interesting ideas have been coming out of that. One is, we're probably going to look to create a little, what's called a pocket park that will transition the sidewalk, which was gonna terminate and not allow people to walk to the Land Trust Fields, which are those fields just south of town where there's a lot of activity, the Land Trust moved their farmer's market down there, which has like grown exponentially since they moved it there, it's been a really great success story that move, they have concerts, there's just a lot of activities that are starting to happen there. So I thought it made sense to try to create, you know, safe transition there, so our design engineer is gonna design this little, what I've called a pocket park, and so it's gonna be a little sort of terminus where people can sit, but it will also provide a pathway out to the those fields, and Kent Land Trust is very much in favor of that. So we're hoping that will be a next summer, it'll go to bid in spring, hopefully. And then it'll be on that same timeline for next summer as it was last summer for Phase One. So it was, it, it took three years to get it to come to fruition, but our composting pilot at the transfer station launched in July and it's moving along, people are sort of working through the, you know, the change of doing composting, but we're now at the point where people are less sort of complaining about, well, you know, I have fruit flies, and now they're sort of all saying, I have no garbage, this is amazing. So it's, I, I really see that that's gonna be a, a good thing for the town and, you know, save us money and be doing the right thing. HRA and Waste Zero have been just above and beyond amazing, they've had people there every single weekend for like seven weeks providing support and positive reinforcement for our residents, they just have been, you guys know I'm a, you know, big picture of HRA, but they just have hit it out of the park again. We're working through a proposal from Kent Affordable Housing for them to acquire a small parcel property between South Commons Affordable Housing and sort of the backside of the town garage, it's town property. But it would enable them to add another twelve units and expand that South Commons, so it's in the eight twenty-four referral right now, actually tonight for planning and zoning, but I don't see any barriers to that, just moving through the process. We have a, moving on to recreation, we have a hundred thousand dollar playground that's due to get installed in the next couple of weeks at Kent Commons Park. And also have a multi-generational basketball court and a splash pad in the capital plan for that park, so. And we've gotten a bunch of grant money for the splash pad, so we're really gonna position that to be like a very flagship amenities park eventually for us and all of you. We have, because I, you know, go big or go home, we have four ordinances that I am planning to bring to town meeting in October, ranging from a rewrite of the tax abatement that's been going on for over a year to some inland wetlands fines, to hopefully updating our building permit fees, which have not been touched in I think twenty or twenty-five years. And our cemetery association is winding down, so they are asking the town to take over the six cemeteries, so we need an ordinance for that. And just yesterday I received a report from OSTA updating us on a big request that we made to adjust all of the speed limits coming into the four gateways into town, which they are agreeing to do, so the speed limit will be lowered coming into the village, which is, I think, a big win for pedestrians and just the village in general, because as was is with everybody, it's a little out of control, the speeding, so that's sort of a I think I hit all the high points, and I know I have, I'll, I'll be here for one more, probably one more meeting. But truly, like, I get weepy thinking about y'all and how amazing you all have been and, you know, coming from, being a new, new person four years ago in the pandemic and just having so many cell phone numbers that I could pick up and call anytime and just helping me, you know, get the stuff done that I've been able to get done for our town, has been, I, I really, I'm very grateful for you all. Gordon, handing it off.
Thank you, Jean, and I would like to say, because I, I think I've been around longer than anybody at this point, because the the last couple of years, the last four years are probably the most challenging that I've seen being in this spot, so the people that are retiring after a short period of time, I totally get it, you're smarter than I am. But anyway, it, the jobs are getting more complicated, the issues are more complicated. And it's really important to have the resources sometimes that the CAG can give municipal leaders for the continuity thing, as, I mean, a lot of, I guess when I started, people serving for twenty years was not uncommon, now it's now it's, you know, it's not uncommon, people leave after a year or two, so having something in place to support these small-town leaders is really important. Also having, on the up, on the upside, I'm not sure somebody's mentioned this already, but it was a good week last week where we got the ruling that would keep the delivery room in Sharon Hospital open. It was a, a really good example of federal and state and local partnership with the leaders all working together for the single goal, it was certainly a, a big grassroots effort, it went across state line. So it is an example of how things will, you know, can work and will work. It's, so that was a good day to have that come down, of course, it's just a temporary thing, there needs to be more children, there needs to be more deliveries. We need to have younger people in this area in order to sustain things like hospitals, some people don't get that, that if there aren't young people, you won't have a viable hospital, so. Anyway, we are, we are happy about that, we're still working out, sharing the pain on storm damage, we have to rebuild some things. Again, our crews have been great trying to get through that, good help from John Field. It did stop raining long enough for us to have a really nice agricultural fair last weekend and bring everybody together. Just completed a composting application, and anyway, good to see you all, and hopefully I'll be there on Thursday next time. Thanks.
Right, I think we're running a little late, so we can probably whip through these action items, the administrative items, I'm gonna Uh, folks, up to minutes.
I'll move the minutes.
All those in favor, up to minutes. Okay, extension on the first one, yes, I'll send. Action, approval of financial statements for June. Do I have a motion to move ahead with that? All those in favor, I, I I think can we take the endorsement of the state OSWA grant application as one? Second, all those in favor?
Discussion, I just got a question.
Sure. E. Works preserving three hundred and thirty-six acres within the forest?
I think it's supposed to read, it's, it's a parcel that's, that would be, would make it a bigger green area. No, it's not, it's not. Right, right.
Okay, sounds good. Just making nineteen hundred acres, keep on preserving this, that's gonna have a lot of population in the northwest corner.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye, that's what they want.
Post, extension, okay. Endorsement of the Bay Reconnecting Communities and Neighborhoods Highlight Grant from the town of Winchester. And blah, 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 all those, is there a motion to approve? All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
And last but not least, the endorsement of this state brownfield assessment down in Winchester, do I have a motion to approve that?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Good, it's an emotion to adjourn. All of your brother, we're all related, I've been in a slave.
I will say though, at one point in time, we had twenty of twenty-one members in the meeting, which is notable.
That's awesome.
Oh, Jim Britton couldn't make it at all, and went to Washington. He was the only one, yep. Thank you for everybody who's online, I guess.